And we have Police Department is going to say something very special.
Okay, so we're starting with Mayor Peterson. There's a favorite quote that I have Ralph Waldo Anderson. He's a lecturer, philosopher, poet. Talking about leadership. He said, "Do not follow where the path may lead. Go instead where there is no path and leave a trail." This is something that speaks to me when I think about leaders and what they do, whether it's in the commercial world or the public world. So in 2001, Steve along with multiple council members, many other citizens helped Liberty Lake incorporate. Steven has served as the mayor of Liberty Lake for fourteen years. He sat on numerous commissions and has shown a deep passion for this community. Steven Charmaine, their cute little dogs, have praised us as a staple of this community at farmers market, city council meetings, and ribbon cutting events, amongst many others. You oftentimes can catch them riding their bikes or on their golf carts. And we look forward to seeing them continue to show up to events. Steve, thank you for your service to this community over the many years helping the city get started and the continued service to the different groups that you're involved in. And in your famous words, "You're free to move out of the country." I'm on that one.
So, Marjorie, you want to kick us off?
I guess so.
Yeah, you get to talk.
So, I've had this hidden for a while.
Oh, wow.
I've been talking about this is, the artist from this actually came back in my hometown. Michigan. And our department, we believe, are very supportive.
Mayor, Mayor Peterson, you've been our rock for the years. We thought we'd have to put something together. You touched a little bit of all of these projects, we didn't want you to forget them. So, I have a collage for you. Thank you for being here. It's been a great year for us. For example, you will be home in your picture.
Thank you.
You have to have patience. Mayor Peterson, personally, I don't know anything from the opportunity to work for this great city. I'm so enjoying the time I've been working with this city. The work that you do for me. I think I have myself, my staff, who wants to be people. Fourteen years of leadership. This was our city in the first incorporation. This was the...
Well, I still want to have fun personally. Well... Those are from the city of Spokane. If you can't get these, ask us to.
Mayor Peterson, I know we've been here still over a year, but the support you give the library and the way that you lead the city has been wonderful. We truly appreciated it and couldn't figure out how to use the three you've contributed yet. We're still working on that. So, we can't change. We've been programming for a couple of months. I know that's all is all good things, so.
We have all these camps, so we'll do this.
So, Mayor Peterson, on behalf of a grateful police department, I want to thank you for your leadership. We started this thing together through the help of a young thirty-five-year-old police chief back in 2001. And I'd like to need to start something pretty special here at the city. I appreciate that opportunity and stand up for the world to me and my family, all the officers here that serve our city. So, on behalf of the police department, I present to you two of our challenge points. One is our Chief Challenge Point, so from the first police chief to the first man. And that is for you, and this is our police department challenge. Presented to you.
Well, you know, on the plaque that says, "All duty requires..." You don't build it for yourself. You don't build it for yourself. You know what people want, you know. People want it. That's what we do. We knew what this community needed, we wanted, and we tried to deliver. So, I wanted to just talk about the last few years. I'm a numbers guy, and so we'll talk about money first and last. But we put eight million plus dollars in our local roads. We put another eight million or plus dollars in our parks, all the ones in the Orchard Park. Put two million plus dollars in equipment. We paid down all of our debt except for, I think it's sixty-four thousand, RJ?
Eight.
Eight thousand dollars that we paid off in June next year. So, we started with no money. We didn't start with any debt. We got advanced on our property tax from the county back in September when we hired the chief. And so, we didn't start with a lot of debt upfront. We purchased about fifteen million dollars worth of real estate. To the City Hall, Trailhead, six and a half acres, some land up on the hill, some parkland. I even put ten dollars in to buy the school, the K through two school property. So, and then, at the end, we'll be talking about our budget. Currently, we have about five to six million dollars in cash in the bank. We have about twelve million dollars in our lift fund, so about almost twenty million dollars in cash. And then, on top of that, in 2015, we put Connect Washington. Liberty Lake on the map and Connect Washington. And that was a twenty-nine point six million dollar program to harbor Henry and Parker, basically. In 2019, we were able to move, accelerate that funding forward through the legislature. Just get that budget kicked off today rather than in 2029. But... The progress that you can be is of people that you hire and you give jobs to and you brought home. Those directors, Chief September, RJ, Katie, Justin, Marjorie. Lisa, Ann, oh, Ann? Where does this go?
Behind you.
So, Ann, I heard her in 2007. So, I said, "Wow, can you come help?" I don't think, did we argue as a group?
No, it sounds like you insist.
No, she was quick that year and then still watching. Scott was my first mayor pro champ back in the day. He was the only individual that ran unopposed to the initial actions. So, he was guaranteed a fine. But it was a lot of fun and a great job. Now I've been able to bring him back because he made the deal. Finally, Katie. You know, Katie and I had a discussion back in 2011. She says, "You know, I really need you. I need somebody of your caliber to come in and help to our public works." And she says, "Well, maybe I don't know." He says, "I think I have another job." And I said, "Well, let me see if we can push charm around." And ended up going to Burlington. And so, we continually twisted Katie's arm and sold him back from Burlington. And she's kind of a catalyst, catalyst. I don't know what you see today. Making sure that that vision of what we wanted, truly did it though. Outstanding individual, the leader. And again, what can I say other than the fact that this team is terrific? You have an ongoing change for the course there in the coming future. We have a good council behind that, we have some newly elected council people, you know? But you have a plan and you work your plan. And you keep that true. Always remember, it's the people out there that you help. So, thank you, thank you for the gifts. They're great. I've got a wall to come up on. And again, my pleasure to us, it's been great. Thank you.
This next appreciation award goes to Councilmember Robert Moore, or we have to call him Bob. So, Bob lives in Liberty Lake, for those of you that don't know. In 2009, which is amazing life, of over sixty-three years now, Dr. Thomas Moore, sitting there in the back. Bob has served on the city council for multiple terms. Bob also served on the planning commission from 2010 for four years. What you don't know necessarily about Bob is that he served in public office going back four decades on the Ohio City Council. A lot of experience coming from this man. His work is VP CFO for Tresler Oil, as well as VP CFO for Durobag Manufacturing, and his many other titles and roles in leadership and finances served our community greatly. He always had a planning thought process for the future. He always envisioned, "What are we going to do for the future? How are we going to plan for the future?" He worked hard to drive a strategic plan, sometimes when people thought we couldn't get it done. But he saw a plan and wanted to move forward with it. He was instrumental and still is in working on restructuring of the utility tax to help our residents and businesses alike. Bob was very giving of his time to others as well, to include farmers market, the Ohio National Guard, to trainers, amongst many others. But more importantly, Bob has become a mentor and a leader in everything that he does. And I can say, "That's your friend." Thank you, Bob.
We want to thank everyone who's given us the opportunity to serve and be like. Just like to thank everyone who's given us the opportunity to serve and be like. Honored and firmly trusted. So, thank you all very much, thank you.
So, if you want to take my follow-up, we have some guests here to ask them a lot. We've been kicking season, what can I say? I truly enjoyed, first of all, seeing you as council, as council with a new experience to me, coming from a county library assistant to the city library, very different. And listening to the comments that you have has been very interesting and I've learned a lot. But also just the support you have for the library, the comments you have, I say, make deeper about what we're doing and where we're going. And I truly appreciated that over the time I've gotten to know you. And I heard that you opened all the gates, particularly about the war force and everything, so I gave you one. And I was like, "This is it, I truly appreciate it already."
Councilwoman Moore, I'm glad to meet my mother and mom. I truly enjoy the opportunity to work with you, among your battles, among your questions, among your problems, and everything that I'm considering in the city. As the champion of strategic planning, I thought it would be appropriate that we provide you with a great conversation.
Bob, we wanted to make sure that you didn't forget our maintenance crew and how hard they work and wanted you to know how much we respect you and everything you've done for us and for the city and all this work. Thank you. And here's a picture, so you don't forget us for your wall, dirty jackets and all.
All right, so I've got a story about Councilmember Perry that I want to share. So, talking about his strategic plan and how to prepare for the future on their last year, his last year's budgets, he was talking about preparing for capital purchases for the police department, making sure that we always had money available for police cars and things that we needed for public safety. And I was like, "Wow, I think we're dead." I think things we could have assumed. You know, I asked for it, and you should have given it to me, and I don't think we got the plan for it. And he's like, "Chief, I'm trying to give you guaranteed money." Oh, yeah, no, can't be quite that. So, I think we appreciate that. So, on behalf of our police department house, we present to you one of our challenge points.
Okay, now, oh, you know, and I wasn't playing, I was saying anything, so I'll let her know. So, most of you know that Councilman was my dad, so if you do that. And he's always my inspiration. He was elected to be City Council member every Ohio back when I was a kid. And I remember, you know, I mean, he stayed way past by that time, I'll write it to me, because that was back when, you know, we had real cell phones and they would call in the election results every so often. I had the back of one of his campaign signs, they were cardboard way back then, plastic. And they were even metallic in the back of that folder. And his signs were black with a bright yellow lettering, which is why I chose that color to be for my campaign signs this year. But, you know, it's always, I remember just going to meetings and watching him and, you know, watching the process, which is what inspired me to get involved here. And I'm like, "Oh, fair, sir, if you could, I'm going to miss you, but hell, we can talk more."
You're going to find out what a good lobbyist I am. We have the Mayor's Award, is that correct? For the year, this year. And of course, you know, everybody here, I think, again, going back to what we talked about earlier, have gone above and beyond their requirements. Went one hundred and ten percent. But this year, I want to make some comments about one person. And this is what they say about you. Sakti Hyatt began her career with the city of Liberty Lake in 2013 as a record clerk of the police department. During her time here, she has taken additional tasks and responsibilities to include managing the property and evidence reading, evidence collection and crime scenes, and execution search rooms, office management, social media outreach, access training, NIBRS compliance training, terminal agency coordinator, and processing hundreds of public records requests every year. She is the point of contact for our access and technical security audits conducted by the Washington State Patrol. She is recognized in the region as a subject matter expert in the area of police records, national incident-based reporting requirements and compliance. Her skills in this area were used to assist the city of Spokane and the entire region in implementing new processes that would make records more efficient and create accurate reporting measures. She was honored by the police department in 2013 by being the recipient of the Chief's Award, and again in 2016, when she received both the Chief's and the Sergeant's Award. Sakti is responsible for submitting our NIBRS reports to Washington Association of Sherrers and police chiefs, and to the FBI. And we are proud to report that we have been recognized as an agency reporting with zero errors and a hundred percent compliance. Wow. All incidents that Liberty Lake Police Department responds to and where reports are written are sent to Sakti for final checking, for reporting compliance and emerging into the regional records management system. This year, that is over seven thousand reported instances. She is often described as being extremely knowledgeable and efficient and completes the work of two or three people. We are glad to have her help provide some revenue and workload in 2020, adding a part-time assistant. I want to present this award to Sakti Hyatt. I want to just say one more thing about Sakti's accomplishments. And that is, as the city of Spokane, they recruited her heavily to stay there. They offered her more money, better hours, probably a bigger office. Mayor Condon tried to twist her arm to stay. He tried to twist around to let her go. But I'll tell you one thing, thank you, Sakti, for coming back and choosing Liberty Lake as your home.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate everybody very much, especially my family over here, so.
There you go.
Thank you.
Okay, our police department is here, so I'm sure it's going on out there. Their crime stats don't look impressive. Okay, so tonight, we have several words to present to our officers. They're annual recognitions that we do, where their accomplishments start from here. And we're going to start off with the Sergeant's Award.
Man, the council, pleasant to be here. Sergeant's Award 2019 is presented to Officer Tuan Nguyen for exceptional performance of duty while serving as patrol officer to the city of Liberty Lake. Officer Nguyen has only been with our department for approximately nine months. Yet his diligence and dedication to service, teamwork, to include his proactive style of policing our community, has contributed to the city's overall safety and the individual safety of all citizens who call Liberty Lake their home. Officer Nguyen conducts his daily responsibilities and duties in accordance with our department's missions of holding the law fairly and permanent, to prevent crime, to pursue and bring to justice those who break the law, to keep peace, and to provide quality police services to the community by promoting a safe environment through policing and citizen interaction. He does this with an emphasis on fairness, respect, empathy, dignity, and professionalism. Officer Nguyen's proactive, self-initiated approach to law enforcement has netted approximately eleven hundred and fifty-one individual incidents handled by him this year, resulting in numerous physical arrests, criminal citations, and traffic infraction issues. This also includes a notable incident in which Officer Nguyen's actions were directly responsible for saving the life of one of our citizens. Officer Nguyen here promoted the department's mission with great enthusiasm, intelligence, and professionalism while keeping in mind the values we share with our community. This brings great credit upon you, the city of Liberty Lake, and the Liberty Lake Police Department. Tuan, thanks for your service and hard work this year.
Tuan's scheduled, so you know we're not going to do graphics. Next award tonight we'll be presenting is the Chief's Award. So, the 2019 Chief's Award is presented to Officer Jordan Bowman. Jordan, let's go. This officer, Bowman, completed the total Training Officer Academy. This training gives him the responsibility of training, guiding, coaching, and mentoring officers that are new to our agency to ensure their safety and success as they begin their career with Liberty Lake Police Department. Officer Bowman also became an instructor in our VAC, PVT, and less lethal weapons platforms this year. Officer Bowman applied for, was accepted as our new volunteer reserve police officer coordinator. He is responsible for the supervision and training of our current reserve officers in the recruitment and assisting in the selection and hire of new officers to our agency. He is recognized for his lifesaving efforts by administering an arcanism to a subject that was not breathing and had no pulse. Officer Bowman, along with another officer, I've heard of, will be tonight, continued his lifesaving efforts resulting in a subject making a full recovery. By the way, proud to present the 2018 Chief's Award to Officer Bowman.
Proud to present the 2018 Chief's Award to Officer Bowman. Well, sir, our next award tonight is our 2018 Reserve Officer of the Year Award, and that is presented to Reserve Officer Chamber. Officer Greiner was cited for this award due to his dedication, yes, shown to the department and the community, which is evident by the time and effort that he has demonstrated. He has served honorably in this role for 14 years. He is available to assist our agency at moments' notice. And after working over 50 hours a week at his regular career, he then volunteers hundreds of hours every year in our community, serving as a reserve police officer. He is certified bike control officer, which he enjoys very much. Serves on our regional high incident response team, husband of the SWAT. Uh, he represents our agency in a professional way at our numerous community events. He is greatly appreciated and respected by all members of our department. And I am proud to present the 2018 Reserve Officer of the Year Award to Chamber. So our last award tonight, um, with the police partners, our 2019 Officer of the Year Award. The 2019 Officer of the Year Award is presented to Master Police Officer Mike Bowman. Officer Bowman exemplifies our department vision, mission, goals, and values and objectives. In 2018, he continued to be one of the most proactive officers in our agency and fully embraces our community-oriented policing philosophy. With the unprecedented number of new hires that we had in 2019 by police officers, he volunteered to take on the responsibility of field training officer to assist the agency in meeting our training needs. I don't wanna state her name, but he did. He serves our agency as our defensive driving instructor, active shooter instructor, and teaches the Too Good For Drugs program to our fifth grade students. He serves as our department's DVO maintenance officer, and he's on the DUI task force for the Spokane region. His work ethic, integrity, and initiative coupled with his practical approach to policing has earned him this award. Proud to present the 2018 Officer of the Year Award to Mike Bowman. I just appreciate all the officers being here and supporting each other and the family. Thank you so much. And Mr. Mayor, that concludes tonight's session.
If I can have, before I leave, please come in here. And every officer, please come in here. It's gonna be the hardest thing to write down. When you look at these guys, they sacrifice everything. Their families sacrifice everything. Bravery, bravery is not absent a beard, but action, the mastery of it, and the base of fear. As police officers, we go out day in and day out, in the hottest of hots and the coldest of colds, to make sure that these, this community is safe. It has been an absolute honor to serve with every one of you, brothers and sisters in arms, to fight the good fight. It's been a pleasure to serve this community as a volunteer police officer. An absolute honor for the last 14 years, with the support of Chief Sergeant Morgan, Sergeant Jones. I always said this was gonna be hard. I'm officially announcing my retirement as a police officer of the city of Liberty Lake effective December 31st. I want us all to keep in mind, as we see these officers out on the streets, the sacrifice they make, not just physically, but mentally. It's not just the physical tasks that we take on as police officers, it's the mental challenges as well. I want to thank my wife and family, our kids, for all your support. I want to thank this community for all your support. You see a lot of things as police officers, a lot of good things, and a lot of bad things, a lot of bad things. The things that make it worth it is a community like this that embraces the police officer, the sacrifice. And the one memory I will forever have in the 14 years that I did this was at this year's symphony, there was a little girl, I'd never met her before, never seen her. And she walked up to me as I was walking around in the audience at the symphony. And she said, "I love you," giving you a hug. That's what makes it all worth it. So I'm, thank you so much for everything you've given me, for everything you do in this community, and you will always be true, true friends. Thank you.
All right, so earlier this year, you all know the library engaged in consultants to help us complete a community needs assessment and library master plan project. The consultants, Kimberly Bowman and Associates, they are hired through a competitive process, and we've been very pleased with their work, which has helped us to develop our roadmap for the future. Um, they have delivered on all of our expectations, and the project is on time and on budget, which is always good. Um, so now I am pleased to introduce Rob Cullen, who's going to speak about the work we've been doing this past year. I have our strategic plan that I gave you guys. And then to follow, probably in the next week or so, is we completed an 85-page packet, which we're still doing some final piece on, but Rob is going to give an overview of everything that we have done this year.
Good evening, everyone. Appreciate, uh, good to see y'all again, uh, to kind of start to close out and wrapping up the project. So, um, in the follow-up of what Justin said about the platform, one of the reasons we didn't finish it, we like to have this opportunity to hear some of the questions that might come up tonight, so we can make sure that anything that is addressed tonight gets addressed in the report as well. Um, but it is like primary, so. Um, so I'm gonna make this quick, Justin asked me to keep it at 10 minutes or less, and then questions. So we're gonna kind of run through this quickly. Um, this, I'm not gonna go into all the content on your slides. I clipped a bunch of stuff on here to give you just a kind of snapshot of some of the things you're gonna see in the report when you go through it, uh, but definitely, obviously with 10 minutes, I can't go through all that. So, uh, this process, you know, like Justin said, this has been a multi-month process. A lot of data gathering, community input, which was the really biggest lift. And kudos to the library, the great job they did in getting that, uh, people into the sessions and, uh, people taking, me taking the survey. We did a bunch of data analysis, looking local and, uh, national data, a lot of analytical space assessment. Um, and then, uh, some of the, the, one of the key events was a strategic retreat that we held, uh, back in October. So just a couple things to go under there. So the community input, again, that was really, we thought the biggest, the, the most important part of this is really hearing from the community what they wanted, um, from the library now into the future. We had almost 500 people take the survey, about 72 community members attend the, uh, discussion groups. Um, so we heard a lot of information, we heard a lot of positive things about the library and a lot of things that people want from the library, um, and that's all captured in the report. But, you know, it was interesting, we never specifically asked, there was never a question, "Do you wanna, do you want a bigger building? Do you want more facility?" Yet a lot of people came forward in, in the community groups and in the survey specifically saying that, despite any kind of, you know, solicitation of that, of that question, so. Um, so a lot of, a lot of information there, and a lot of the kind of, as you look at some of the things from the survey and the, and the needs we got from the discussion groups, a lot of things that they want relate to facilities and physical space as well. Um, we, we always, I never want, I never get, uh, think it's enough to beat the drum on some things that certainly came up as a mess during, uh, this, this process that we see in every community. Um, you know, things like people assuming that books are just going away, that everybody's just, the library is all virtual, um, and the reality is that's not true. It's not true here, and it's not true in any community we work with. Uh, ebook usage is plateauing nationally, uh, not just library usage in New York and Atlanta. Uh, one of the reasons why publishers are, are getting more aggressive with their approach to libraries and ebooks is because they're not seeing that growth anymore, so they're trying to find new ways to monetize. Um, and digital natives, these kids that grew up with devices, um, actually have a higher affinity for physical, physical books and for the library itself, and using the library at higher rates than any other generation, one of those regimes need. So there is no downward trend in library use, library needs in the, in the, in the country, and we don't see that in Liberty Lake either. Um, we did a bunch of benchmarking, so looking at how Liberty Lake compared to, uh, similar communities, particularly in the state of Washington, looking at usage and analytic data there. Uh, two of the big, kind of, where we, where Liberty regularly deviates is in, uh, visits and funding. So funding is pretty easy to kind of look at in terms of, you know, over dollars, dollars per capita. Um, and they're definitely, not the, not certainly the lowest of the comparison group, but definitely on the lower end. Um, so, and then visits, which is interesting, visits are low, yet data like circulation and bargaining attendance are at or well above average for similar communities. So people really value the library, they're using materials, but they're not coming to those kind of other reasons, which I think what we heard from the community is because the space isn't really there and isn't, the space itself isn't, and I don't have the kind of aspects and features that people are looking for. Uh, we did a lot of demographic research across a variety of spectrums, from census and advantaged Spokane data to psychographic profiles and lifestyles of the community. So all of that's captured in the, in the report as well, and that might be interesting reading for you because it obviously applies more than just the library. Uh, one of the big things we did was the space needs assessment. So one of, we talked about this when we were here for the discussion group with, uh, with you all. Um, we looked at, analyzed a lot of this across a variety of kind of different approaches, right? We have scanners that we've developed over the years, kind of inadequate at a minimum level. Uh, we took a benchmark, so we looked at every library in the state of Washington, Oregon, and Idaho that are similar in size and kind of community makeup to Liberty Lake. Uh, looked at how that averaged, those spaces averaged out. And then we did a programmatic build-out, a very conservative programmatic build-out, where we look at all the different spaces and what you need space-wise to do those things. If you look at all across those, really, they all end up in that same range of .9 to 1.29 square feet per capita, um, in terms of space. So that puts the current library, which is about 9,600 square feet, um, at certainly at least, uh, a little bit undersized. And if you're looking forward into build-out at Liberty Lake of 18,000-ish, you're definitely, the current building is, is not gonna be, uh, sufficient by those standards. And we also looked at, uh, we did a condition and adequacy report card. We do it, and we had the staff do it, and both of those really, uh, they came in pretty similar, uh, ratings, and they were, things were mostly, uh, inadequate to pour, uh, across a variety of different kind of services, space, and, and kind of picture need bases. So like I said, one of the big things we do is the strategic retreat. So when we do all these, we bring all these findings and we put them in front of a group of, of the community, right? So some of the council members here, library staff, other community members, um, and we really let them come. We're not the kind of consultants to look at all the data and say, "This is what you have to do." We kind of say, "This is what the data points to, you're the community, you decide what that is." And so the pictures here just kind of represent some of the work product out of that. Um, all of that specifically led into the strategic, or to the strategic plan, the high-level strategic plan, which you all have a copy in front of you. Uh, and so the key focus areas that came out of that process were community engagement and awareness, library as place, and access to resources. So those are the key areas, and then the, uh, five goals, specific goals that kind of came out of that, um, the, are at the bottom there, raise awareness, basically, under that, uh, of the community engagement and to increase the trust that the community has in the library as a worthy and valuable investment, a couple of dollars. Um, under library as place, to ensure the library is best configured and appointed to meet the current and short-term needs of the community, we're gonna speak to that in a second. And develop a long-term facility plan for the library to support the rapid growth of the community. Um, and then under access to resources, to evolve, uh, as needed, resources, physical needs, programmatic and staffing, to support the needs of the growing and changing community. So there's a bunch of depth below that, too, and we'll be working with Justin on developing a one-year tactical plan that will get into the specific operations budget impact, goals, measurables, all those kind of things. And that's, that's a, a nice step on that. But a big piece of this was really an assessment of, of the, of the facility from a now and a future standpoint. And the conclusion that that strategic retreat group came to during the day, um, and I think is supported by the data, it's certainly supported by, um, our work, working with libraries across the country, is that the current library, uh, is at or probably really beyond capacity at, at its current size. Um, and at the very minimum, a reconfiguration, some at least minor, lower-cost renovations need to be taken in the short term to at least try to address some of the deficiencies. Uh, and in the long term, and expanded our new library, ultimately is really needed as those, this community reaches its, uh, full build-out population. That size range probably is in the 16 and a half to 19 and a half thousand square feet, um, if you look at, again, the benchmarks and the programmatic approaches, uh, to say. So there was a variety of key factors that kind of went in that, with, for the group. Um, uh, not just space alone, but, you know, specific key components that the community asked for again and again, like need more meeting rooms and study space, uh, ADA compliance, even though it's not bad, there are certainly some issues that need to be addressed. Um, and they're, they're just, and parking is also a, a key issue that we cited as, as diminishing some of that visit, uh, uh, the visits that people have in the library as well. Um, so some, some recommendations coming out of the short term. Um, like I said, we, we think the library can really rethink within the envelope that they have today. Um, there's definitely some things we've identified in the report that could maximize, um, and improve the actual use of the building within the existing envelope to address some of those specific needs and to make better use of the space. Um, and then long term, um, you know, if the, if the community really decides that, that, you know, that this, what, this, that agrees with this group and looks at the data and says, "Yes," you know, review that information. Uh, you know, particularly, I think the city might, should consider, uh, conducting a feasibility study to look at, could the current building be expanded? What are the options there? Are there other buildings or facilities, other options? Is it construction? Is it acquisition of a different building in similar way of how you acquire? Is it acquisition of a different building in similar way of how you acquired the library as it is today? Um, uh, but I, I would say, you know, I think what we heard from the community is, you know, is you gotta be careful about how we're gonna do this, and a lot of capital projects that have gone through voters have not passed in the, in, in the past, in the past. So, I think, you know, our advice from the outside is making sure that this ultimately is a community-driven process, not a city council-driven process, that you're more than listen and react to what the city, you know, the residents of the city are saying and, and let them move forward with the process. Um, when, when we see that, our own pressure, we see more success with that in communities that, that are, where the process is more driven by, by residents. Um, like I said, we, we have a bunch of things in the report that kind of get, specific things that can be done to improve the space today. Not gonna go through all those, but, you know, just, you know, really, I think, getting into the, those different aspects can, can make that. Uh, and then just kind of two concluding thoughts, uh, again, from our experience with other libraries is, whatever direction you go in terms of, of, you know, anything that ultimately might need to go into the community and saying we need additional funding to make this happen. Combine that with also private, uh, money. We see that time and time again. It's not just all being put on the public, where there's actually a, a heavy emphasis on private donations, foundations, creating a foundation, uh, that always, uh, you know, I feel like we see that consistently help with, uh, with success on those kind of projects. And I can't highly recommend enough working with, uh, the Every Library Organization, which is a national, uh, group that, uh, basically works with communities just like Liberty Lake on trying to strategize and figure out how do you communicate this, why you're, you're, you ultimately put something on the ballot? You know, why are you doing that? And, and to help, uh, really strategize, uh, the best way to get that communication[715.32]
Makes the decisions on our funding. So this budget problem is eventually gonna land, well, soon, in a few weeks. It's gonna land on the legislature for some kind of decision. So, um, which leads us to some questions about your project specifically and what to do. Where, where should we go now? I've had many conversations with local legislators and talking with Senator Patton, on breaking the basics. I'm also talking with Senator Billy and Representative Mitchell and Representative McCann. I haven't had a chance to talk to them since I shared that. I'm talking to the folks who are working on, that are connected to transportation and are gonna be a part of this decision. At this point, all I can do is speculate about how they're gonna solve it. I don't think the legislature actually knows how they're gonna solve it. They are tossing around ideas. But probably the two most interesting and plausible things that I've heard, which will lead to some discussion we did have about the strategy. But probably, um, the two that I favor that I've heard, let's put it that way, that I think are the most likely, is to pause everything for the anonymous necessary to cut it down. And the other one is to re-rack the project list. Okay, those are extremely different options. To re-rack the project list requires the new winters in position. And this is a short session. And I think it will be very challenging for my view, my own personal opinion. I think it will be challenging for the legislature in a short session to make those decisions. To take some legislative projects and put them out of long ways and fund every legislative project. I think it's more likely we're gonna see a universal pause to create enough cash to cut short the ball in the interim. And I think that, I would consider that if that happens, a band-aid. And I think they'll take this up again in the next session, in the longer section, with a more meaningful solution. So, where would that leave us then? What should we do?
Can we talk just a second about, uh, the continuation of certain elements of this? Particularly the, uh, the design.
So C and CO, C and, and.
It goes a bit, right? But those are things that need construction. If, if we choose to put a pause on the whole thing, including that section, in your view, how does that line up with where we should have gone ahead and done that project ready?
So I'm not gonna recommend you do that. Um, I can tell you that what I am doing inside of my own capital program is I am, it's, and working full steam ahead on this effort.
So I want to make sure I'm gonna clarify what council members might ask more from answer. The question is, should we move forward with design and every? Can your answer is?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
And again, and, and I'm basing that, I want you to understand I'm doing that strategy in my capital program. Uh, so, you know, everybody's gotta roll the dice a little bit here, right? Because nobody really knows what the outcome is. My bet is, uh, I'm, I'm thinking that these projects are not gonna go away. And we don't know what order they're gonna be funded in, and if we're not ready to fund them, we certainly will not. So for example, if they do this short pause, they should generate the capital. We shut down the design work on these projects and then they're ready to fund them. And we're not ready, then I'm just gonna go somewhere else, probably. So, um, my strategy or my capital program is get everything ready at camp. Get prepared for this pause to end, assuming that at least some of these projects are gonna get funded. I don't know which ones, but I wanna be ready. So that really is my recommendation to use full steam ahead. Um, at least on this one, the construction will be paused until this sort of.
So I have a question for the council members. If we were to put our energy into a place to engage our legislature, engage, um, Sergeant Lawrence's office, whatever, where should we be the lobbyists? What do you recommend that we do, uh, to keep the attention on our projects?
So, um, I'll answer that, but I'm gonna give you a little bit of the playing field. So there is a significant amount of non-municipal pause throughout the state. Projects are here and there for a lot of elected people, through a lot of jurisdictions. The criteria that was put into place, we'll go a little deeper into that. Safety projects were not paused, active projects or under contract were not paused. Uh, preservation projects were not paused. So, um, now, there's some reasons for that, um, because the consequences of those projects are a valuable concern. Safety projects are about life and land, preservation is about feeding the system on green. The new projects are important over the calendar year, and so the consideration by the governor was that those can wait. Because we, we have been waiting for something for a while. But we're just easy to apply a few opinions with that level of criteria. There are people now who are helping their projects, the safety projects, trying to bring up their projects as preservation projects. Renaming their projects accordingly. Uh, there are people campaigning and lobbying constantly on this. I, I will tell you in my view, that's not going anywhere right now. Because what has to happen is the legislature has to decide how they wanna take your, um, to the budget problem. So lobbying, lobbying, um, DOT is not big to you much right now. Lobbying, I think the governor is probably not gonna get you a lot right now. I think the most appropriate strategy is to work with the legislators, who are going to be part of the decision-making process on, on how and when and if your projects are funded. Um, and again, I will tell you on what we have, I am talking to the legislators about this project. I want to see this get funded, just like you. So you should probably.
Oh, Mike, I think it's always important to realize that, you know, we started this process a long time ago. And at best, it looked like it was probably in 2029 or 2030 something before we were gonna get this. Suddenly that moved forward, and I think a lot of that has to do, to the 281 cities in the state. We're one of 281 that I ran now. We came to the table, the lobbyists, the school behind us, the fire department, the police, and everything. And we brought money along with us to say, we are skating game. Now, I was disappointed with anybody else's, and everything got put on hold. But I have lost, not lost my enthusiasm or excitement that I'm confident this is our move ahead. So therefore, I'm very supportive of the move in design. Um, and once again, I don't see everything maybe gonna get done, but I do see that something's gonna get done. As long as we're in the play and we haven't lost our enthusiasm and that commitment that we've given to day one, I think we have a good chance of getting either all of it or a good share of it.
Yeah, and I would, uh, I would argue you have a good story. Uh, that's partly what you're, that's partly what you've got, where you've got.
Correct.
Um, you have support, you have agency support for your projects. I know that's going away. Um, but there's a, there's a large hole in the budget, so we saw somehow there's gonna be some consequences to that. No one, again, no one's really sure how this is gonna work out. But we should be ready, and we should assume, in these, I'm gonna speak for my strategy. I'm gonna be ready for when the dam breaks, to make sure I'm ready. Again, ready to go ahead on these projects. So for us, we're not slowing down. And I think that's good advice for you.
You talked about the re-rack, you say re-rack was?
Yes.
And, uh, one of the things, the advantage that I think our project has, when you start to look at the state as a whole, is that size. We're not one of the major projects, we're one of the small projects. And so if you look to the legislature, what do you want to do? You wanna do something within your community and within close by to your neighborhoods. So that's a positive thing. The second thing is, is that you gotta keep these contractors busy. Went into 2008 and lost a lot of contractors because of recession. And so you need to keep people busy, working within those communities. And we have some problems in our contractors here. So there's opportunity there as well. When we do a re-rack, is to, is to package it as these smaller projects within the region. If you wanna stop something, stop a $400 million deal, and do a $140 million deal, or two, $220 million deals. And now we have a lot of talent within, as my.
As long as it's not the Marshall County.
Well, I. I'm not wanting for career, but now I'm just talking about us. But I, I think, you know, in, in reality, when you start to look at those legislative transportation committees, and those chairs, you know, they're gonna realize that they have to keep these contractors busy. And they're connected to another sub-projects within a number of projects across the state. So we have a design in a small project.
Thank you, and I, again, I agree. Um, but I think another way to think about the re-racking is for, um, maybe the projects don't change, but some of them are burned in years, some of them are built now. That's a re-racking of the priorities that are set. One of the things I, uh, there are, there are some projects that have a lot of importance throughout the state that have not been done. And so, you know, there's this discussion that perhaps those will slip in somewhere in the conversation. That could be part of the re-racking conversation. Some things fall out, some new things come in because priorities change across the state. All that's possible. Uh, but we have four legislators on transportation here, both, uh, three of them are in Florida. Mark Kertel is the editor, and we also have Senator Billy as the majority leader. So we have, we have some horsepower in the conversation. Again, everybody across the state is lobbying right now to protect our. Uh, so it's just a lot of annoyance to people who are making decisions. With the exception of the legislators, who are talking about their districts and they're gonna go transfer this out. So I think the focus on legislators in terms of your concerns and support is probably the right strategy. Yes?
More a comment than anything, I had a meeting last week with Senator Patton, talking specifically about this. And shared with him the importance that we continue to fight for the funding of our projects, certainly. Not only from the standpoint of traffic, but safety for law enforcement, fire, to get some money easily effectively. But as well as to grow out of the community. And Senator's kind of agreeing with me wholeheartedly that this is a project we're gonna be fighting for, for our community. Um, we're gonna be working with some other senators, representatives as well. And I have a conversation about initiation with them also. We're gonna continue to drive this very hard, to make sure we get, uh, just again, we're gonna fight this project.
Uh, I think that's, that's the approach. And again, um, the legis, the legislature has the responsibility on the transportation program. In, in design, it's really solely with that. And so any issues in the program, short, long, research, go over to that research. So, uh, that is the group of people that will actually decide to pay for this. All the rest of us will be set.
I would share, um, Mr. Grievous' and Positivation, a priority rule that I actually need to resume. The funding will potentially resume for a lot of transportation for our, our state. And I believe that our work is designed specifically to complete the work related to that portion of these imperatives. Sure that when that does resume, um, our project can immediately be remedied. So my perspective is we're on our work.
All right.
Oh, Chris.
Um, Katie, when is, I know we have briefly touched on the discussion of whether or not we wanted to proceed with the design. When is that supposed to be back in front of us to actually? So we're in two negotiations right now. Um, the, the R B U three, the top firm is in negotiation with Scott. And we wanted to get a subcontract agreement with Detroit General's office, I think. And then I want the design contract. And then also I was in conversation with the Fraser, the Senator Fraser. We hope to have something in the next few days. Um, probably I speak with Senator Lawrence in your office twice a week, uh, if not more. Um, so we're in constant contact with Washita, we're in constant contact with keeping of all the requirements. Um, but our goal is to hopefully, if there's any agendas coming that aren't ready, um, there is a hard time at this time here getting the, the contract back from the administration of the state. So we're shooting for January 7th. We hope to have both of those contracts and then the appraisal done. And I think this is, is about a 12-month effort. Scott, is that right? 12 months for a heavy load. Thanks.
So you have a quick question there. What's, you've got, Katie, give us her opinion, but here's what your opinion is on what the shelf life is on these designs. It's probably a couple of years, or we restarted designing nine years. So, um, that's a great question, actually, yeah, that you asked that. Because we, we are challenged with that sometimes, and it's, uh, interesting to me. So there is a show of life to certain elements of the design, uh, standards change, uh, environmental permitting changes, things like that. Typically, I've, like, I've scanned it as well for another period, it's not being too harmful to you. Uh, I think the design says on the shelf, four or five years. When we pull it down, we're gonna have to correct some of it, re-identify some things. Uh, but investigations, combination investigations, for example, that's all that we're involved in. So it's a little bit of a risk game. Again, one of the things I hope you heard me say, um, that I have to, I have to state this, I don't actually know what I'm talking about here, because the legislature's gonna decide this. Uh, but I hope you heard me say that one of the very, very plausible outcomes is delaying all the projects for six or seven months to create enough money, uh, to finish up the volume. Okay, six or seven months. So from my perspective, that I've been doing this quite a few years, it's still sort of.
We, we are challenged with that, and it's, uh, interesting to me. And so there is a show of life to certain elements of the design.
I know that you brought that up, uh, because there, there is always some risk. So I'm gonna bring this along with the council, is, um, now, I, I really appreciate your opinion, um, both on that material and also the. And also the airtime on the shelf life. One thing on my head is, your focus is more transportation projects. That's one of many of our focuses, so I think we should keep that in mind. By intuition, it's that clear, though it's still a role within design. I just think we should keep that in mind, say, why not only your role, it's a major or part of our city, but we should keep that in mind. Thank you, Mr..
Please, I can't risk this. Mike, it's been a pleasure working with you. And thank you very much for all you do for our community and, I know that we're in good hands with you.
Thank you, and I'm sure we'll see you soon.
Oh, sure. Thank you. So the City Board's commission reports, so that's our fire chief, Peter Booth.
Yeah, pick off whatever.
Labor board, that's, um, here's our labor board.
Okay. I'm just gonna say, tittle to what Ralph Collins stated. Um, the second item I wanted to bring up was we had 177 children at Saturday with Santa. So it was quite successful. And we're looking at how to monitor and adjust it. Maybe next year it'll be 277 children.
Great. Sheriff Parks and Arts, Sheriff Parks and Arts Commission, planning commission, Phil?
Yes, real quick.
All right.
Sorry. I don't have a lot to report, but, uh, we met last Wednesday. I just wanted to let you know, Richard Siler was elected the 2020 planning commission chair. And we see we got a, we received a, the same presentation that you did from the, uh, Superwater District. And, uh, continuing discussions on the lines, can you pose some questions for me? Thank you.
Thanks, Phil. Uh, who's, who's the commission, the, the commission here tonight? I've got all the commissions of the, uh, Sore Connor District, Sore Connor District here. She was on first, was vacation right here. How's your boys? You guys in the boys? Mike?
Sure, I, uh, made, uh, um, Councilman Britton and I were able to attend Spokane Valley City Council meeting last Tuesday. Where Senator was there, elected officials, and City Council were sitting down, talking about their projects. The thing I was encouraged, the city in their hearing, that when they're talking about their projects, they're also talking about our projects. Because Mark Arroth, Ty Cidwell, who came with the Senator Patton, who brought up the survey cases, I mean, there. That he had referred us to in the audience, that this affects also pretty late. So seeing what goes on there, I was very encouraged by that. And also, um, Chris and myself, Mayor, to be able to attend the GSI, I think it was on Thursday. You know, they were talking about projects, and of course, 9/76, the media apparently couldn't have. But they were also talking there about the valley and things that are happening. And that's why I'm still so encouraged that I'm expecting things to happen every day. I was getting on funding, or the majority of it. Also, when I hear those individuals talking about that, they're not in highly, you know, some individuals may look and say, well, the valley is not a house, people should need more attention. We, they're 10 times bigger than us. But projects they're dealing with really affect us, the projects we're dealing with affects them. So that should really be a benefit to us right now, so I'm very encouraged with how long we pull this. Thank you.
Okay.
Multiple accounts members on the mayor, um, were able to attend today a river cutting ceremony for Treasure Alley. It's a new business here in Liberty Lake, off, uh, Kenzie Lane. So you get a chance to get down there and, uh, check out what their river does to you.
The other boys? My name's Katie.
Same issue.
Okay, so, I'm just gonna give up this great. So if you remember about eight years ago, we had to move this all the way through May, but now we have updated. So, we have two years, we're seeing the power in the politics, so Lisa and I will be, uh, looking together on maybe that update. Um, on that note, I would ask Lisa to come up and share with you something about 12 feet deep, I believe, uh, labor industry. It's not really bad.
Yeah, I don't think it's super brief on this. So, um, we probably have, uh, little home set, setting and building permits, anything once or twice a year. It's a very small area in the city grid that involves some manufactured homes. Manufactured home inspections are kind of the specialty thing, um, in that the standards and requirements are very specific to the models. And there's certain portions of it that already are under the jurisdiction of labor industries. But there are some parts of it that are the responsibility of Liberty Lake. Because these are specialty inspections, and we only do them once or twice a year. The time associated with doing the research to figure out what it is that we're supposed to be, um, inspecting to can be very challenging, depending upon the modeling age of the, uh, equipment. L and I does this day in and day out. Um, this, uh, you have a contract proposed that's modeled after an agreement that Moses Lake has with L and I. Uh, the act does provide us with the opportunity to just contract directly with L and I to provide this service. And this is an efficiency thing. Um, no cost to us, no impact to our residents in that, uh, the fees that they will pay to L and I would be the fees that they would pay to us. They just pay people who have higher level of expertise in the specifics associated with this very specialty, uh, area. So that's the bottom line. Uh, I stand for any questions you might have. That's it.
Oh, I was gonna, you know, thanks for, for bringing this to us, listening. Really, in effect, because we are, you know, do it very often, we have to brush up on every time. Really a savings to the city, not, not a cost neutral, because it's gonna be saving our staff time, trying to relearn that. So thank you for your resource on this issue.
This is not generating additional fee to the homeowner, does it?
It does not, no, it does not.
Okay, so that, is that a, the fee they pay, is that a somewhat of a pass through, something that's a pass through to us?
It's not even a pass through, we'll direct them to, of the line, much like we do with electoral inspections and whatnot. So, uh, pay the same fee, they just pay it to somebody else.
Correct, thank you.
Okay, so our bigger training, our bigger subject called Public Record, every couple of years we give training. And so our city attorney, Sean, is about to begin his training on the second council meeting in February. So if you are a new commissioner, if you're a new, newly-elected city council person, you can get your training here and keep track of who have received the training. You can always do it online if you have to, but that's why I mentioned that.
Kind of sucky, yeah.
Um, I, do you know what the second council meeting in February is? January and?
18, I think.
The 20th.
17th.
18th.
February 18th. And then I just wanted to say thank you to the mayor and the council over, because 2019 was an extraordinary year in a lot of ways. But I think what it boils down to is the support that you gave to our employees, the support of the conversations that we did, the support and the recognition of their events, you know, we have the summer picnic, we have the holiday, um, event. And I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of all of our employees, because it's the decisions that you make on policies and on budgets that help us deliver the services to our community by the equipment that we need, be safe, you know, receive training, all of the things that go into providing service to our community. So I just wanted to thank Mayor and Council for, for our employees this year. And then my final comment is, thanks to members of City Hall, we closed on this, this day and January 1st, New Year's Day. And I want your global wrap on the April 1st. Right back to the.
Thanks, Katie. So we had a workshop discussion on 2020 retangler, perhaps it should be, our best, the installation.
Here we are again.
Yeah.
Um, so in your packets, uh, you should have a memorandum from me that briefly outlines, um, a recommendation and some options for your consideration. If you remember last time when we talked about this, uh, we were asked to go back and look at maybe some costs associated with installation of these, reevaluating the priorities based on the new policy. And so this memorandum clearly outlines that. So, uh, we met for the, uh, new ordinance, um, and we came up with this new ranking, February 18th, this is on the very first sheet. You'll see we have some highlighted ones, uh, we can talk about those in a minute, but really our recommendation would be we would defer those because there are some potential projects in 2020 that would negate putting flashing beacons at those locations. Typically, in the past, what we've done for installation of these, we've installed one or two a year. And typically, those are done either with, uh, armed staff or a combination of staff and outside contractors, existing in that. But yet the 2020 budget, there's $65,000 currently in progress on the pedestrian states and project budget. I provided an estimate at our last workshop of $140,000, uh, to fund, uh, the priorities that we had at the time. But it's important to note, and I did not notice at the time, that that $140,000 does not count our number one priority, which is crossing at Bitterroot Mission. And reason for that is that was initially gonna be a 2019 project that we did not get to. Uh, and so therefore, if you look at our ranking, it still remains our number one project. And we know based on the installation of the flashing beacons at Country Vista near Home Depot, it's a very similar circumstance of, of Mission near Bitterroot. And so we know that that project cost, um, between $55,000 and $65,000 for the one crossing. There's safety island, ramps, multiple beacons, that whole. Uh, so on the second page of that, uh, we're willing to state to what our, uh, staff recommendation and options are for your consideration. Uh, and that is that, uh, the progress we have of number 226 that are highlighted on that first page, that we're recommending those be the first, uh, based on, uh, projects that may able to make the need for those. Option one is, uh, this is used that $65,000 that is currently budgeted in 2020, uh, to fund the one crossing at Bitterroot. Option two is to utilize the current budget, the $65,000, um, to retain a design consultant to provide a cost estimate for each one of these, uh, priorities. So that we would know what are the costs for, breakdowns for each one of those, uh, projects. And then, uh, we could make a determination, connect to the council, um, and we could make an amendment to the budget to. to fund how remaining, you know, could be done based on the consultant's recommendations, what the cost of each of those projects are. Option three is to, city council could provide a not to exceed budget, so provide a flat dollar amount in the 2020 budget. And then we would do our best on using both staff time and project management consultants. And what project is, and get as many of these done as possible for the money that is provided. And looking at our party list, it's our strongest party number one to do that. And quite option four is maybe something we have thought that that may come up discussed.
Thank you. Can I answer or correct you something? So the sixth option two, $65,000, it does not cost $65,000 to do design and get good solid estimates for all of these locations? Our guess is it would be in the $10,000 range or there about moving through a task order to the council. We tell them to do would be a little initial page and identify the score of the budget for each of those projects.
Chris?
So obviously we'll be able to find projects if we take out those three mentioned. And as a question last meeting, obviously the work is less, so I think you can just figure out. But do full staff have time to manage and work five projects this year again and everything else that needs to be done?
I don't know, which is going to be.
So basically if you design, I don't know how to call this guy, I don't know. Basically if you design a consultant, bring together a design consultant and they put together a number and then you put it out to get, there's the economies of scale. And we can hire contractors to do all this more, considering being more than what we, it costs us for our city. You know, we sell staff costs, so. Or we could, good way we can do it, which is a mix between designing and installing, you know. So it's a good question. We can, we can still explain more concerns about it, so we're busy, right? So please.
So I would think it would take a couple of months to get the design done. Right, so I posted out in March eight, all right? And then if you go out there, then there's another month or month and a half. If you put them all fit together, I think we could get it done with existing staff. If we each mail them individually, then it would be a gentleman's duty to get. Very formidable.
Couple of questions from the head. Two, the first one being that understanding, you mean, okay, to prioritize the work. How did you settle on Bitterroot Mission being the topic?
Well, it goes back to the guidelines that we adopted. And with Bitterroot specifically, first of all, this was a work project for 2019 and it's just not getting completed. So we're going to, that didn't change the priority because we didn't complete it, so it's still our number one priority. But a lot has to do with the multi-lane on Mission by Bitterroot. So it's five lanes, it's two ninety directions, center turn lane. And then it's also a, there's a bus stop, SDA bus stop that is located on the south side of Mission by Bitterroot. That people have to cross to get to that bus stop. And there's clearly not a crosswalk or way to, without going basically to roundabout, crossing there and then walking back west to get to that location.
So the apartment complex, I don't know, we have to learn how to conquer. So they're basically, Bitterroot apartment community, crossing the street, there is no crosswalk there. And it's multi-lane and I think this is one, thirty, thirty mile house.
The question is, if you go in another, we have $65,000 in there, which is basically the Bitterroot crossing. And there are about $15,000 in there for regular crossing, or?
Yeah, the Bitterroot one takes two full sides, which is $20,000. So we.
Just so may I, if you want to remember, is the cost of the apparatus, it's not the cost of the install.
No, I understand. I want, the question is, $65,000 to two Bitterroot.
Correct. No, it does not. I'm going to clarify that, because, sorry, we didn't have Jan Spock on the server. But we have to do the design, that's the most complicated design element that we have for pedestrian walk crossings because all the sidewalks and ADA and everything that goes into there. So that's probably $10,000 design. We'll give the one, if you're just to $60,000, so that's $70,000 that comes in the same price. And then you have to buy two of the pedestrian things, which is another $20,000. So it's really an $80,000 crossing.
Okay, so it's $80,000 for Bitterroot. And then the others are averaging about $30,000 bucks.
No, the others will be $10,000 for purchase of materials and then somewhere around five to 10, depending whether it needs to be there or not.
So basically eighty plus $50,000, you should want a crosswalk, right? Yeah. Bitterroot plus five dollars fifty, which is make a budget in there, which would make sure you want $80,000. You know, there's a, there's a significant priority for our community, number one. This is a priority that we stepped up before, I think, oh, rock up. And we started to fund pedestrian safety a hundred thousand dollars on some kind of regular basis. So I think it's, and I think we're just all moving to the fact that we might have a little bit of extra money from this year. A lot of true.
Anything, yeah.
Okay, that's going to be my submission.
I think before we go making, in this 2020 budget, I think, I would support going out and having these things. And so we know it's much closer, not just a sway of what we're going to spend in twenty twenty. And then once we get those results back, then we can talk in 2020. I mean, we can support this depending on the priorities and what we're.
I agree with Chris, both quite, both quite earlier. We all know the true cost, it's hard to make decisions. So I, so I recommend that we get this assessed so we can get the full pricing on these. And realize that these spending appropriately as possible. And I share with you your costs, what we can do, and I think that budget management makes sense.
I agree. I think, you know, we've already budgeted, played the 2020 budget, this one approved by council. To approve the policy and procedure part of it, this one approved. And they have not come up with their priority list. Because hope is that it's five one. So I'd be in favor of really deferring to what you're saying about the actual.
I'm probably in favor of supporting pedestrian funding. Favor now, favor later, Bruce, you can, whatever is more accurate.
Further discussion?
I think you had, I'm good. Initially when I looked at this, when I saw option two, to me it seemed it was logical that I really did turn off and realized utilizing $65,000, which I assume, whether it was written as we were supposed to spend $65,000. But having heard it was probably $10,000, I certainly support, we're going to support number two. Because $1,000 would be $65,000, I actually came up with the number four, which I won't point. But I think option number two, reading next six, we're moving ahead. Having said that, I would like to address number one, Bitterroot Mission. Is it, it was identified in 2019. But what I have, have to go to also is that what is the criterion? The criterion basically eight things. Stop rocks to the school, Bitterroot does not come into play there, I believe. Stop rocks.
They used the north school. Good, okay. I know there's a show on the north side as well, but.
What I would like to see is to use really good common sense on these. There's Bitterroot apartments and there's no other development around there. And it is one, one tenth of a mile roundabout to Bitterroot Street. I'm not saying we shouldn't do that, but it's a priority. I have to think about that. So I just want to bring that up.
Other comments? All right, well, thank you.
So option two is consensus, we'll report that.
So the task order will be done before we.
To be a day.
It's a workshop, so.
Move to action, I have a consent, I have a two, security December third, two thousand and eighteen, the council. And we approve December seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen, budgetary amount of $400. Ten seven thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars, sixteen cents.
Second.
In a second, further discussion. I hear you all, Chris, yeah. I have an iPhone.
I move general business number one, approve lodging tax advisory board recommendations and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement once they become a board.
Second.
In a second, further discussion. I hear you all, Chris, say aye.
I move general business number two, to approve the transportation improvement board's grant agreement. For country goes to drive high school access signalization, a amount of $345,905 in authorized by the mayor to sign the agreement.
Second.
In a second, further discussion. I'll take it, Ben's excited about getting that light, so. All right, Chris, say aye.
Aye.
I move general business number three, to approve TIB grant money for Liberty Lake Road Vance project. Spray paint, just drive, a amount of $528,651 in authorized by the mayor to sign the agreement.
Second, further discussion. Scott, thanks a lot for putting that in. I mean, that was a good grant.
That's south of.
Let this break. Further discussion, I hear you all, Chris, say aye.
Aye.
I move general business number four, to approve parks and air commission appointments.
Second.
In a second, further discussion. I hear you all, Chris, say aye.
Aye.
I move general business number five, to approve purchase of snowplow attachment, a amount of $6,625.47.
Second.
Further discussion, I hear you all, Chris, say aye.
Aye.
There you go.
I move general business number six, to reject sole bid for pavilion park donation permits.
Second.
Further discussion, I hear you all, Chris, say aye.
Aye.
I move general business number seven, to approve commission structure agreement for the city's golf row and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Second.
In a second, further discussion. I hear you all, Chris, say aye.
Aye.
Of course, there you go.
I move general business number eight, to approve interim city agreement with the Department of Labor Industries, delegating, delegating the labor that LNI can perform onsite installation inspections, a manufactured house, mobile homes, and authorized by the mayor to sign the agreement.
Second.
In a second, further discussion, I hear you all, Chris, say aye.
Aye.
Resolution here.
Resolution is file dash one sixty four E, City of Liberty Lakes, Spokane County, Washington. Your resolution of the city, excuse me, the resolution of the city council of the City of Liberty Lakes, Spokane County, Washington, approving certain public improvements and public improvement costs and providing for other matters properly when needed there to.
I'm authorized Washington dash twelve, sorry, twelve dash one sixty four.
Second.
In a second. Danny, seven, Katie, nothing, there you go. Any, any discussion? Not seen any discussion, all right, there was a resolution which ran in. Seven to seven, it's adopted. Next, where's the call, yeah?
Resolution number nineteen dash two sixty three, City of Liberty Lakes, Spokane County, Washington, a resolution waiving the competitive bid requirement due to a sole source purchase and authorizing the service of meso rig work on Parkus Parkway.
I move resolution nineteen dash two sixty three.
Second.
In a second, further discussion. Chris, you have any?
Just to add on this, this goes back to deal with the, the accident that happened back in October. The brickwork dump had done, that brickwork is very specific. So we're reading as a sole purchase. They need some time to set up to make it ready. And this is, I mean, reimbursed from the insurance company.
Further discussion. I hear you all, raise your right hand. I got seven out of seven, it's adopted.
City of Liberty Lakes, Spokane County, Washington, resolution number zero two dash four seven F. A resolution of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, amending the adoptive personnel policy for all employees of the City of Liberty Lake.
I move resolution zero two dash forty seven F.
Second.
In a second, further discussion. I hear you all, Chris, raise your right hand. I got seven out of seven, it's adopted.
City of Liberty Lakes, Spokane County, Washington, ordinance number one three one dash C. An ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, and mainly ordinance number one three one dash P, passed on January twenty second, two thousand and nineteen, entitled, Establishing a Musical Library Fund Change Making Account for the City of Liberty Lake for the Purpose of Making Change for Cash Transition. Ordinance number two six four, City of Liberty Lakes, Spokane County, Washington. An ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, adopting a budget for the period January one, two thousand and twenty, and December thirty one, two thousand and twenty, for promoting funds and establishing salary schedules for established.
I move ordinance number two six four.
Second.
In a second, pardon me. So on the second last page, exhibit C, I've got some of the mandates to determine the budget. We would take these emotions one at a time, if you want to go this time or as small as a whole or for the other. I'll announce to you what you may have.
Are there any, like, computer guys, any chance you have a slot for that? Not like a look over your shoulder. I don't think I've had any questions. Work, I'll be here. Thanks.
Oh yeah, slide in a more direct form, so. Probably in the middle of time, I don't know. So we, I'd look for council direction and one at a time or all as a whole.
I think they've all been discussed several hours. I think it's reasonable to take them as a whole.
Have a motion there.
Mr. Mayor, I know that we recognize, I was one through five, some recommendations by staff and amendments to the budget. The one is two sixty four.
That's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Further discussion. I hear you all, Chris, so the motion, right? So they're in this, measure right here. Seven out of seven, twenty minutes. Okay, we have a motion on the budget, there's a, right?
Yes.
Further discussion on the budget. Hey, any further discussion, this is an opportunity for citizens to make a discussion or make comments on our two thousand and twenty budget. At this time, you want to?
I have a question, I apologize. And this has already been done, I apologize for my, I mean. We had talked last meeting about taking, I think there was seventeen thousandish dollars that Fox Maris, Artson made in nineteen, we talked about moving that into twenty twenty to make their budget the thirty five, thirty five plus seventeen. But if it gets changed or do we need to?
Don't need to be, what the, what you're adopting means thirty five dollars to be transferred into the portion.
And sent to you still there. Just want to make sure we've had that all in place.
Further discussions, I'd like, I'd like, if you have some, further discussion, if you have a comment. All right, Chris, you can put your hand.